We're going to give about two minutes or one minute?
Two minutes.
Two minutes for introductory remarks. That's mine.
Two minutes each for each person. Okay, thank you for coming.
Since Ms. Crawford is the incumbent, I'd like to afford her the opportunity to begin our forum tonight out of courtesy for her being the elected official at this table.
The same rule ladies, if I hold an ugly black cone up.
How long is that, does that mean over?
I bought this in May of seventy-eight. This is a thirty-six-year-old cone with one missing too.
Let's go Ken.
Oh, it means you have ten seconds left.
I mean, it's nice that you are frugal, but we need to know.
Right.
It costs ninety cents.
Are we ready?
Please go.
Thank y'all for coming tonight. I've served for ten years, since two thousand and four. I have worked very hard for this district. I've done all kinds of different things in different schools. I've worked at Arthur Circle as a pizza helper on Pizza Days more than once. I've worked for teacher appreciation in the schools. I've spoken at the schools and I've listened to the teachers if they have any worries. I also answer questions from parents and even students who feel comfortable enough to call me. I always keep people anonymous unless they don't care and find out the information and I get it back to them. I jotted down some of my accomplishments. I got a library at Steer. I helped the schools keep quality teachers like Gateway. Every year I have to fight for Gateway students to keep their teachers, particularly at Steer. I have helped purchase, well, I mean, I didn't purchase it, but I've helped in the process of getting board approval for Byrd's Parking, which is woeful. At Sri, there's a tennis and multipurpose court that I've gotten through Sri and a second floor on their wing because they had an increase in population. Put magnets at Yuri Drive and at Broadmoor trying to get students to come so that the other, the neighborhood portions would say, hey, we want to be in the magnet and let's do, work harder. And it pulls their scores up, so I've done that. There's, at Yuri, I did a magnet where if you qualify to take the test, you don't have to take the test. If you live in that district, you can just be in the magnet at Yuri Drive because that's their neighborhood school. At Broadmoor, that part didn't work, but I got it, a testing magnet. And I got money for teachers at Sri volunteering for in-service. And those are just some of the things that I've done in the past ten years. There's more.
Thank you, Ms. Jen. Shepherd, I'm sorry, Shepherd.
Come on, you can stand.
I heard the starfish with me because I love the story behind it. There was an older gentleman walking on the beach and he was throwing starfish into the water that had washed up on the beach. A younger gentleman was kind of making fun of him, wanting to know why he was doing what he was doing. And the younger gentleman said, there are so many starfish there that if you work like the whole day, you would make a dent in saving the ones that are there. So the old gentleman, he picked one starfish up, threw it back into the water and said it mattered to that. My name is Emma Shepherd, number seventy-five on the ballot. I recently retired as a teacher here in Caddo. And most of all, I want all of our students in Caddo to know that they matter, that I want to make a difference in their lives. I have been and always will be an advocate for children in public education. I bring experience that would be an asset to the Caddo Parish School Board. I have classroom experience, reading specialist administrative experience. I taught kindergarten for thirteen years in the classroom. I worked as a master teacher whereas I worked at many different schools, working with children that were below grade level in either reading or math. I worked as an instructional coordinator, worked as a literacy coach. Where we did all of the professional development for the whole school. Assessed students that were in reading and language arts, found intervention groups that they could work, where they could address their skills. My time is, I'll finish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having this forum. I think it's so exciting to see such a wonderful neighborhood come together like this. My name is Dana Locke and I'm born and raised in Caddo Parish. Lived here all my life, never wanted to live anywhere else. But I come to you today as a parent and a grandparent. I am a parent of three adult children that attended five different parish schools. And during that twenty-four-plus years, I served on every PTA and everything from president to field day because I too wanted to give back. I wanted to, you know, be involved in my child's education and give back to those teachers that, you know, chose that profession to educate my children. And as a grandparent, a grandparent of a one-month-old that I hope will attend Caddo Parish Schools one day. I also come to you today as a business person. I'm in my eleventh year owning my own small business. I have seen the decline in the economy and had to make some restructuring changes in that business and had to be very frugal in it this year. And then I come to you as a leader. On September thirtieth, I completed my sixth year on the board at Providence House, which I'm sure you all are familiar with. During that six years, I served as president. I served five years on the executive board and I served two years on that finance committee. During my time at Providence House, I saw a direct correlation between dropout rates and homelessness. I learned the value of spending every dollar efficiently. The year that I was president, actually, the budget was based on some wonderful Hanksel Shale donations from the year before and we had to cut our budget by twenty-five percent within that year and did it successfully. We had to make some really hard decisions. But I feel that I can draw on that as far as the finances go. Thank you. Do I have ten seconds?
Ten seconds.
Ten seconds. So we're going to go in reverse order. Now.
How many questions do you have about?
Probably fifteen.
Ooh, okay. One-minute responses with the ten-second at the fifty-second mark. It's going to take over an hour, so let's just settle in.
It's really hard to answer to come up with a thought for ten seconds.
So don't feel bad.
You need to be prepared. Okay, the first question, Ms. Locke, and this is addressed to Ms. Locke and Ms. Shepherd. You're running against an incumbent, Benita Crawford. What will make you a better choice for the voters than the incumbent?
First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Crawford for her commitment to our parish these last ten years. I hate this, it sort of sounds negative and I don't really like negative. But what I can say is my time, again, running a business, working with the finance committee on a very large nonprofit here in town, I feel like a fresh set of eyes would be really good for the budget to maybe dispersing, you know, the funds where they need to go. So to answer your question, I think my business background and my experience probably helps with.
Thank you. Ms. Shepherd?
Okay. I also like to thank Ms. Locke for the time that she has given. And I'm the kind of person, I don't really like attacking someone else. So what I would like to do is say what I want to bring to the table. And I believe with my experience, my recent experience in the classroom and as different positions, I believe I can bring to the board that experience and try to help them solve some of the issues that we face now. I've been in many organizations that we've had like millions of dollars of budgets. So I hope to get in and make sure that the budget is mainly focusing on what will be needed in the classroom to get our children performing up to standards because they are our future.
Thank you. Ms. Crawford, in reverse, you are the incumbent. Why do you need, do you feel that you would be a better candidate in this election than your two challengers?
I would be a different candidate than my two challengers. I too have had experience in nonprofits through Cabosa and spent many, many years in PTA on a local level with all my kids were going to all the different schools that they went to and on a state level and a district level. So I've worked with budgets for them and Cabosa. Learning the budget with Caddo is difficult when you're new. I already have a good working knowledge of the budget and really as a school board person, what you do is the superintendent has the budget and they bring it to us and present it to us. And then we ask questions and look at it sometimes line by line. We ask questions about that budget. We don't make the budget, we question the budget. I guess it's a good way to say it.
Thank you. Ms. Crawford, kind of leading into that question. Do you believe that there should be equal funding on a per-student basis for all students in Caddo Parish, regardless of the school they attend? And what would you do to ensure that there will be equal funding if it's brought to your attention that that process is not working?
The MFP allows parish, the money we get from the state, every student gets the same amount of money in every school. Where that differs is the title money, the different title monies, that comes in from the federal government. The other thing is grants make it unbalanced. They can get state grants, they can get federal grants. It's not fair, I guess if you want to call it not fair. But from the state perspective, every person, every student gets the same amount of money. It's the at-risk schools that get the extra money to bring in new programs, better programs. And do I think we can spend some of that money better? I absolutely do. I have worked on that for years.
Would you like me to repeat the question? Do you believe that there should be equal funding on a per-student basis for all students in Caddo Parish? And the follow-up is what will you do to ensure that all students, especially students in District Eight, get the same amount of funding as students in other parts of town?
Right. The MFP allocates money for each student. And to make sure that the students are funded appropriately, we just have to, I believe, follow the money. And I hate that the schools have to end up, you know, having fundraisers, selling pizza and popcorn and coke. I wish there was some way that the schools were a priority where is, and I guess I want to say something like bar sales, they don't have to have a bake sale to get the funding that they need. So I just believe that if all, if schools could get the appropriate funding that they needed, I think all of our children could be performing better.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I might have called too. I'm on track. Both are correct. The minimum foundation program, the MFP does provide the same amount per student. Where is different, and maybe this question is asked, I don't know if this is why, is that some schools have the same footprint as others, but they may have more students. So depending on the allotments that are given, if, you know, there's a principal and a librarian and, you know, whatever else, but you have more students, that could cause it to vary. And it is frustrating. I've met quite a few administrators and principals and teachers. And, you know, the low-performing schools, you know, have their own frustrations, but they do get the title money, which is a perk. But again, I know it's very hard because a lot of the schools that are higher performing have to, again, have the bake sale and raise the money, so.
Okay. So Ms. Shepherd, this will be your question first. What is the biggest issue facing the schools specifically in District Eight? And what will you do to solve that problem if you are elected? If you had to choose one issue?
If I could choose one issue, I would take politics out of education. And that's in District Eight along with the other districts as well. And I don't know if this question is coming up, but that brings to the thought of the common core standard. You know, those are, they were okay until the politics got in the way of it. So if we could just take politics out of the issues that we face in education, I think we'd be better off.
Would you like me to repeat the question?
Please.
What is the one biggest issue facing the schools in District Eight specifically? And what will you do to solve that problem if you are elected?
Again, I've not had an opportunity to meet with all the schools. So a lot of my information I'm gathering is from the meeting like you all, although some have met with me. The feel that I get from those that I meet with is that they realize there are big problems in the district. And, I'm sorry, in the Caddo Parish district, not just District Eight. And so, you know, they basically feel like there are a lot of tough decisions need to be made other places that could affect us and could affect our funding. And so that, you know, other things need to work out. So any one particular thing, other than we all are very aware that, you know, Broadmoor is improving, but it certainly could use some help, that is definitely.
That would be that Broadmoor Middle School would be your number one priority. Thank you.
Well, middle schools across the parish are in need. But specifically Yuri Drive and Broadmoor are the two schools that I guess I've worked hard as far to get better results from the students, I guess is the way to do it. I've worked with each principal that has been at Broadmoor. You could put principals at middle magnet every two years, change them out, that school wouldn't perform anymore either. And that's what happens at Broadmoor. But we finally have a good principal, he agrees. We work well together. And at Yuri Drive, I work well with that principal. And we've talked about different things that we can do to make each school, which is a neighborhood school with a magnet component, and balance the two to make better schools. But if I had to pick one issue, the other thing is you have to make good students better. And those are the two things that I would pick.
Well, it's kind of interesting that all, two of the three, I brought up Broadmoor. There are several questions about Broadmoor Middle School that were given to me. So the next person in line to go first is Ms. Locke. Very few kids in the middle school age that live in the Broadmoor neighborhood go to Broadmoor Middle School. Why, number one? And number two, what will you do to reconstitute the school so it will be a neighborhood school? And will you be willing to resign if Broadmoor's scores do not come up dramatically in your team? Whoa. Tough question. Tough question.
A lot of cameras going on. You know, I'm not sure about the last part of it. But to improve Broadmoor, for one thing, the district line is a little crazy. It's right at the back door of Pennsylvania, I believe, is the street. Excuse me?
She said it's stupid.
Oh, yeah.
Not she, the line.
Thank you, Charles.
On the north side of Pennsylvania is Broadmoor and on the south side, further south, is Yuri Drive. So one of the things, I think we need to look at that district, you know, we need to look at those district lines. Broadmoor is just an incredible facility and I would love to see it grow. So I think it does though have the stigma unfortunately. And other than the district lines, it would take a lot of maybe meetings like this or things in the community to help, you know, for people to realize that it definitely is, you know, could be a really good school. Or it is a good school, so.
Ms. Crawford?
Well, I've worked with Broadmoor even before I got on the board. I would work with it through PTA. It's a difficult being in the school world. I have, with different administrations now, I have been working on the school lines. They listen to me and that is a big deal. But I talked to the principal today and said, if I don't win, please continue the fight to get these district lines changed. So what we're going to do is move that district line back to Southfield so that when you walk out the back door, you're not looking at Yuri Drive students. Even that won't help. We have to change the perception of the school in the neighborhood. The perception is those kids just can't behave. I was in the halls this week, no, not this week, a couple of weeks ago because a little boy missed his bus, his mom put him on the city bus. He roamed the neighborhood until one-thirty in the afternoon. And somehow he ended up across the street from me crying. Can I finish my story?
Yeah.
Oh, because I know everybody won't hear it. And so the guy that does my yard for me was picking him up and got, you know, some basic information from him. And about that time I pulled in and I knew where he went to school by his uniform. And so they took him back to school. I checked in to make sure I could get, they weren't going to feed him lunch there. So I went and got him lunch and came back. And, you know, your job is so varied. When you're a school board, you just don't always think about the things that they're going to do. But the little boy got lunch and they wrote, he was a special ed kid, so they wrote some special instructions in front of his notebook.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Shepherd?
I would say parents' programs and pride. I remember first coming to work in Caddo Parish and Broadmoor was one of the top performing schools. So I would love to see it go back in that direction where it is a neighborhood school. And we need to look at other schools that, you know, could go back to the neighborhood. But we need to put programs in there that will be beneficial to the students and bring some pride back to the school. And many of our districts, we need to figure out some way to encourage our parents, try to put in programs or something that will get parents to make educational priority again. I think once that happens, then we can start to see our children do better.
We're all on target here. The other two questions for Broadmoor Neighborhood.
But let me just point out, the Bulldogs are number one in polls. Oh, that's Mississippi State.
Well, can I, can I say one thing about Broadmoor, what she said?
Well, well, well.
Okay. I just have a lot of things to say about Broadmoor.
Okay. And it may give you the opportunity with this question. Broadmoor Middle School has not been represented by, in the demographics for our neighborhood in over a decade. What will you do to reverse this, because we've mentioned it here, all three of you, about recreating it as a neighborhood school?
I worked on that in a different way than the lines for the longest time. And finally, we got that shut down. It was a lab school and so they could take applications from all over the parish. And even before I was on the board, we asked that they put certain qualifications on those that, you know, you couldn't put your discipline problems there and couldn't have, couldn't put your non-performing students there. You just had to, you know, have a two-point-five or two-oh, I don't remember, it was a long time ago. Tell me what I should get real quick.
What will you do to redevelop it as a neighborhood school?
Well, I stopped being able to take kids from all over the parish. I got the lawyer to say that we were past that point because that was even well before my kids even went there and they're grown. And so we've got a principal there that's going to stay more than two years and who is able to bring a better image to Broadmoor. I think that's a start. The lines are another start.
All of these answers are leading to other questions that have been asked. Neighborhood schools, will you reconstitute Broadmoor as a neighborhood school?
I would really be in favor of that. Because if you live in a community, you know it better than, you know, someone else coming into it. So yes, I would be in favor of that. And I guess getting a start, we would probably need to meet in forums like this to get, you know, consistence from the people that live in that neighborhood around that school. So involving the parents and I believe children are, you know, at that age, middle school, they may have some input too.
Thank you. Ms. Locke? Says Broadmoor Middle School has not represented the demographics of the Broadmoor neighborhood in over a decade. What will you do to reverse this trend? And will you help reestablish Broadmoor as a neighborhood school?
I do sympathize with Broadmoor because Broadmoor School is in the middle of probably the most stable neighborhood in the city that has been so stable for so long in Broadmoor. I think it would be important to pull on all resources for that, not just the school board or just, you know, the administration, but maybe create a task force. And that could create, you know, that could be neighborhood people, that could be those in education, maybe, you know, folks from another city that have struggled with, you know, a neighborhood school that, you know, has lost its luster as Broadmoor had. But I think creating a task force maybe and, you know, come up, you know, with some kind of a mission for it and, you know, have meetings and open it to the neighborhoods other than on voting day to encourage, you know, the improvement.
Okay. Obviously, Broadmoor Neighborhood is a hot topic and that's our local middle school. And there are other questions that we will get to with that. And this leads right into it. You're up, Ms. Shepherd. You ready? Okay, these are hard questions. We have been under a consent decree for thirty-eight-plus years. The consent decree is directly attributable to the Broadmoor situation. What will you do to work, to see that the school board and the school system satisfies the orders in that judge's decree so that we can move past the thirty-eight-year-old consent decree and we can move forward in our neighborhood?
Well, I think, and I'm really not sure how to answer this question, but I'll give a shot at it. I believe if, you know, we could make it equal for all schools and, again, make it a neighborhood school and where most of our schools are neighborhood schools, we wouldn't be dealing with the issue of, you know, the consent decree. Because children would be getting the same type of education. It wouldn't matter, you know, if they were at Broadmoor or Yuri Drive or, you know, across the district line. But I think, you know, it's time that we really sit down and look at what has happened, you know, these last thirty-eight years. Why are we still there? Why haven't we moved past that?
Thank you. Ms. Locke, can you repeat the question?
Yes.
We have been under a consent decree for thirty-eight-plus years. Will you author a board policy or what will you do to see that the school system satisfies the judge's orders and the Justice Department's orders in the consent decree so that we can move past the operations of the school board that have held Broadmoor back?
And I know that is an opinion, but that has held it back. I do think, again, a lot of the district lines contribute to the students that are at Broadmoor. Am I correct in saying the consent decree though is not decided on the parish level?
It's a federal order from the Justice Department and it stipulates things that the school system has to do.
That's why I'm not sure how we can make changes if it is.
Well, the Justice Department said you will do this, 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 and this. And that's been going on for thirty-eight years. As a school board and a school system, if that's. As a school board and a school system, if that, if we've had one problem for 38 years, should we have not, should we not, as a school system, have solved that problem?
Okay.
38 years, same problem. Excuse me.
I was making sure I understood the direction of the question. Well, anything that's been around for 38 years, to me, certainly needs to be reviewed, 'cause a lot of things have to be reviewed.
I'm 66.
I'm well over 38 now.
Ninety-five.
So, yeah, so I definitely think it does need to be reviewed. I think a lot of those children you're referring to, again, are in schools that are much less desirable. So that, to me, as I mentioned earlier, is a complete parish-wide problem that needs to be addressed.
Ms. Crawford, would you like me to repeat it?
No.
She knows.
We talk about this all the time, and I talk about it with attorneys. We meet, without a doubt, many of those implementations that we had to do, the magnet schools, moving children to different areas of the school system. And I was trying to remember which one we don't meet. There's just one that we don't meet, and so I was trying to write them down. And if I had to guess, which I hate to do, but I, I just can't remember for, you know, I'm, I'm really nervous, I don't know why. But I think it's the administrators and the principals, well, okay, is where we don't quite meet the, the Fifth Circuit gun laws. And since the board doesn't pick principals, okay, it's hard for us, we can give a directive to the superintendent to make sure this lasts, but if you don't have the quality to, that's part of the problem in these last five years, if you don't have the quality to put in the schools as principals, then you're kinda missing the vote anyway. So we have to grow our own administrators to make sure they're qualified, and then we can get rid of that last little bump in the road and get out of that consent decree.
Okay. Who's up?
You know, I...
Okay. Ms. Crawford. What does this system spend on lawyer fees, and could we not hire a full-time attorney to satisfy that, that issue?
You know, half the board thinks we do fine, half the board thinks we don't do fine, as far as lawyer fees go.
How much did, did we spend last year on lawyer fees?
I would say about three-quarters of a million, about $750,000. But that's, I mean, people sue us, and we have to, one person can't do all the work. So he has, we have a list of lawyers who apply, and we look at the list and, and make sure they're not, like, one, one set of attorneys took on something that contradicted their help with us, so we had to take them off the list. So we make sure that they're all able to work with us without conflict of something else. And it, and it just is, you know, they work through the risk management, because it's just, sometimes I'm just amazed at what people do when they sue us. I, I personally think we get our money's worth, because they, they help us do better.
Ms. Shepherd.
That's a lot of money.
Three-quarters of a million dollars.
Three-quarters of a billion dollars. Thinking of what you could do with that money in a classroom to help this child that has not learned to read yet, and he's going to the fourth grade, that's a lot of money. One of the things I think that will help with all the lawsuits and all, make sure that when we are hiring personnel, that we vetted that person, you know, make sure they will get in there and do the right, do the right thing, where we don't get all these sued. And no disrespect to any board member, but I've watched a lot of them, so I think if they would read and research the information, you know, that they are given, they wouldn't need an attorney there like 24/7 to, you know, just explain all of this, if they were reading and researching before the, you know, before the time for the meeting.
We, we spent three-quarters of a million dollars on legal fees.
She's, she's, he's rereading the question.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. What would, what could we do to hire a full-time attorney, other than spending that much money for one attorney? Seven, $750,000 a year.
So you're saying, what can we do to, or would I recommend?
Well, the first que, the first part of that question is, what do we spend? And Benita was able to provide that. So, $750,000, you know? Is that excessive? What can we do to, for one attorney, or do we need to hire?
That's one attorney, that's all it takes.
I'm just asking you the question.
In some research I've done, I actually heard that it was more than that, so, but I, you know, I can't produce where I got it from right now. But I know Mr. Abrams is, is on a retainer for a certain amount for meetings and things like that, and then there are other attorneys that, you know, get paid to help with the lawsuits and, and so forth and so on. It does seem rather excessive to me. I would also review how much of everything he is involved in, how many meetings does he really need to be in, or just, you know, shoot an email later, ask a question, I'm not really sure. Again, I'm not pretty to all that, but I would agree, it does seem rather excessive.
This one may be easier, and it goes to Ms. Shepherd. Who comes first in your tenure as an elected official? The parents and kids of District 8, or the entire school system and the central office? Who comes first?
Would you repeat that one more time, please?
Who comes first in your tenure, if you're elected as a school board member? Parents and kids of District 8, or the whole school system, to include the central office?
Yes. I believe the district that I live in, it's like my home, they absolutely would have to come first in my tenure, making sure that, you know, this district has the resources that it need to move forward. And no, we do not have schools that are labeled low performing in this district, but I think, you know, we need to work hard to help it even move forward. But the other thing is, our district, I believe that as a school system, we are only as strong as our weakest link. So as we work to maintain our schools in District 8, whatever is working in this district, I think it needs to be shared with the other schools and replicated if possible.
Thank you. Will you represent District 8, parents, students, and kids first, before the rest of the Caddo?
I don't know that that's a very fair question, because, you know, I know who I'm sitting with here, but I would like to read the mission of Cattle Parish Schools, and that is to improve the academic achievement of students and overall district effectiveness. So that is my responsibility of being a school board member, is to follow this mission. Now, yes, District 8 is very important. I would always listen, I would always do everything that I feel that our schools are needed, but a lot of what's done in other parts of the parish affects us as well. So just because a decision is not made specifically for one of our schools, does not mean that our schools will be improving from it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your last part. Does it mean what?
That we would not improve from it.
Okay. Well, I've always worked from the stance that I work for the people who just, and bond people, 'cause that's who votes for you. And I'm very much, you know, traditionalist in that sense of the word. I always look at every issue from every direction, and I don't make any decisions that I feel hurt any school, but especially schools in this district. I work hard to get, sometimes I don't even get it from the board, sometimes I can, I can talk to the superintendent, or the assistant superintendent, to get the needs of, and I'll use, Strive Island needed $3,000 for in-service for their teachers, and were told, go to the PTA. And my, my, whoo, I was not happy, 'cause we had just found $4 million to redo the thing in middle school. It's a different fund, okay? Capital funds, but still, it's the principle of the thing. So I got the $3,000 from Dr. Dawkins, and they got to have their in-service.
And that leads us into money, ladies. We're gonna talk about money more specifically. We live in the highest, we have the highest property tax in the state. Would you sponsor a move on the board to reduce millages to offset the recent higher assessments on our property that has led to significantly higher property taxes?
So the question is, would I sponsor a...
A motion on the board to reduce millages to offset the reass, the, if you remember, we had reass, we had a reassessment recently, and all of our property taxes went up, and Cattle Parish benefited from it. Would you, would you support a motion to reduce the millages?
I would support reviewing it. It's hard to answer that question without looking at everything it would affect in both directions. But I am one of the ones paying the highest taxes as well, so I, I would certainly love for that to happen. But again, it's very hard to make, you know, answer that question without looking at all of it. We do have very high property taxes.
Well, I fought every roll forward that's been brought to Cattle Parish School Board, and we managed to keep the administration from, from Cattle Parish rolling forward to the taxes. To say I'd, I'd roll, I'd have to look at what a rollback would, would entail, and what it would mean to the school system. I mean, would we have to cut salaries? That's not gonna go over, you know? We have a lot of work to do in this parish. I think we finally have the man to do that, and he's gotten enough people in to, in proper places to do that. I don't think he's gonna suggest that, but I don't think he's gonna come to us every time and say, let's make more taxes, you know? I, I don't know enough of what it would, would, to answer that question specifically, I'd have to get more information.
Ms. Shepherd.
Okay. I, the state, every year, it cuts money from the MFP, so we have less and less to work with. And I believe now that this is already passed, I kinda would be in favor of it remaining, because like you say, there's so much work in our district that we need to do, but I would aggressively fight for increasing it in years to come. I believe the citizens of Cattle Parish, they have really supported our school system, you know, with the, you know, bond propositions, and, you know, the property tax and all that. So I would hate to, you know, well, I first of all wanna make sure that, you know, we are managing things properly, and I believe if we do that, people will be less concerned about rolling the millages back.
In relation to that, one of our local bloggers, Elliot Stonecypher, in some of his recent blogs, has said that we are losing our tax base, Cattle Parish. And as we lose a tax base, that impacts schools. Is that something that we need to look at when we think about these millages?
That's my question. Absolutely. I think we need to look at every issue that's, you know, going to affect our schools. And, you know, if we're, you know, losing our tax base, that is going to, you know, affect the classroom, affect the programs that, you know, we are using, trying to get our children achieving at the highest level. So we need to be very careful about issues like that.
I mean, I would agree as well. Of course, it needs to, to, to all be looked at. I mean, we, we have enough schools now, and a school system that can accommodate 60,000 students, and we have 40,000. So that's, it's obvious there that, that it is happening, and yes, I would agree, it's certainly something that needs to be reviewed. Can you read it again?
It's Elliot Stonecypher, in one of his recent blogs, has, has indicated that we are losing our tax base. What, how do you feel that's impacting the Cattle Parish village rates and the property taxes?
At this point in time, I don't know that it has yet. I mean, it has, obviously, but not a great impact. This budget is impacted, and last year's budget is impacted, more by the charters and the vouchers that have gone on in this district than any other one thing. Our, our sales tax is usually about levels, sometimes it's up, sometimes it's down. Property taxes are, but the number of children who go to charter schools, and we have two with, no, three with more knocking on our door, that impacts our budget right now, right here, today, and in the past. And they take a huge amount of money, because they get more money than we do out of the MFP.
But don't they get per student, MFP funding, like you were talking about earlier?
They do, but they get more of it, because they're taking taxpayers' money to fund private business, because USA Charter Schools funds Magnolia, I forgot who, who funds Linwood. They gave Lanier back to us because it was terrible shade. Not that Linwood's any better, but right now, what we look at, when we look at budget, is how many kids are in the charter schools, how many kids are getting vouchers, which that's changed, the law's changed, so that money's not gonna come out of ours. And the other things are retirement and medical costs. Those are the things that, that hit us right now, right here.
That leads to another money issue.
I have two more questions.
Okay. Four.
Four, okay. We're good, she.
And that le, has to do with campaign finance, and we were given two candidates' campaign finance reports that were filed in the last 30 days, and Ms. Shepherd, yours did not show up on the desk. So I really don't have that information with you. But generically speaking, the question centered in, I thought that was for the judges, but apparently it's for the school board candidates, are you connected, or have you received campaign funds from the Citizens for a Better Caddo? Who makes up that organization, and what has been your relationship with them?
I absolutely have no idea who that is, so, and I haven't seen any money show up in my bank from anybody that I don't know. I don't know that group, but the answer would be, no, they, I have no relationship.
Okay. Ms. Law?
I have received an endorsement from Citizens of a Better Caddo.
You know, what, have you received campaign funding?
I have received a donation, yes.
Who is, who are the leaders of that organization?
Who are the leaders? I can't sit here and name them all, but I will try to remember a few of them. John F. Magnner is a consultant for them, Dr. Roseman, there's a Mr. McElroy, and Mr. Atkins, maybe? I'm not sure.
All right. I, I have those, those people's names here that was turned in, and like you were mentioning, you mentioned most of them, but I'll just ask some of the question, and I'll go to Ms. Crawford. Do you have that?
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Crawford?
Uh...
Citizens for a Better Caddo, who are they?
Well, I tried to find their names on the, on the Secretary of State and the ethics board, I couldn't find their names, but I mean, they're not there. I have not seen funding from them, my funding has come from Paul Crawford.
Thank you, Ma.
I'm hoping to get some more. I have in the past, so I'm sure I'll roll in. So they didn't interview me, so no, I don't have their records. As far as I know, they only interviewed Ms. Law. So I don't know how they, how they chose, but they, they didn't interview me.
Okay. And who are your top, which, who's first now? Let Ms. Shepherd, this. Who are your top three campaign contributors?
Me? That would be hard to say, because the, I had...
That would be hard to say because the, I had more than three give the maximum amount.
Paul Crawford.
Paul Crawford.
And Benita.
My top three would be myself, I have had, I believe, like a $250 donation from Ms. Helen Smith and a couple $100 checks.
For, for those in the audience, individuals are limited to $1,000 a person for individual contributions. And I, and I believe that probably the reason that question's being asked is that political PAC committees can also give a candidate $1,000. And I have the, that's giving me the campaign finance reports of the, of those people involved. If you care to see them, I'm not going to take the time to tell you all, all that. But if you're interested, I think it's, you know, it should, it should be provided to you.
Just on the other side, Secretary.
Right, yeah, or you can pull it up off of the Ethics Commission. And you can see, see who, which candidates received what monies and from whom. And also you can go and look and literally find out the PAC committees, who the people are that are associated with PAC committees and how much money they, they have. I didn't ask the, the part of the question that was there, but I guess it's good to maybe say it, is that the Citizens for a Better Caddo has a, they got a lot of money. And they've interviewed candidates and they've passed out a lot of money, both as individuals and as a PAC. And so I just think that's something that, that if you're interested in knowing, go online and you can find that out. But it also lists, it's not just Citizens for a Better Caddo, it's any PAC committee. And as voters, I think we really need to know who is behind our candidates and what agenda do they bring to the table. So it's something that all of us as voters ought to spend time looking into. Yes, ma'am.
I found my information. I don't know why you are trying to pull it up.
This was given to me.
Oh, I did not use it.
And there was a question, and I'm going to say this. There was a question about one of the candidates' spendings and stuff. And I just don't think it's appropriate to ask in this meeting. And so I'm going to hold that card to myself and that information because, you know, these guys are working hard enough to get their message out. And I think their message is, is more important than just who's campaigning and giving them money. So, but if you're interested in pursuing that, so that the persons that gave me that, that information will know that I'm trying to be fair, the information is there. Okay, so if you want to look it up, okay? Just a, a couple more that are going to close it up. Real easy question. Will you return phone calls to your constituents and will you demand that principals and the superintendent do the same? Is she first?
I don't know. I'll answer it. If I do return phone calls, it may not be when they think I should. If, you know, sometimes because you, you do have a wife, you know? I got a new grandbaby and, well, she's not new, but she doesn't live in town. She's two, she lives in Hawaii because her mom and daddy are military people. And so, you know, when they call, when there's a guy that called during that time when they were here and I played with her. And at night when she went to bed, I made phone calls. You know, you get, I don't know if y'all know this, but you get phone calls and emails about anything. Cold hot dogs at Burr. Because if you have nacho crock pots and chili crock pots, you should have something to make your hot dogs cold. I took care of it. I gave it to, to the Burr principal and said, "You tell the appropriate person." So you, you know, it, it starts down at some of the most mundane.
And the second part was, do you expect your principals and the superintendent to answer calls too?
I always expect that. And if they don't, usually we find out.
Okay.
Yes, I absolutely will answer calls. And even during this campaign, while I've been phone banking, I've had a couple people to call me back. This one person, I believe I've gotten like maybe four calls. So, well, this person will think of something, call and talk to me about it. He'll call again. So yes, I will answer phone calls, emails. I do Facebook and all that. Well, I'm learning to deal with that. And I, I believe that principals and teachers, they, they all need to do the same thing because this is a job for all of us. And our, you know, we need to make sure that our parents, you know, feel like they are part of the process.
Yes, I do totally agree. And it's kind of funny about the hot dogs. I'm sure you get a lot of them. I have to get that person's name and tell them they're in charge of hot dogs next year or something. No, I, you know, returning phone calls and being respectful is, is very important. And I know that there will probably be a lot of phone calls that are, need to be fielded a little bit. But I take pride in, in returning phone calls and emails. I do have a job, but would certainly do it as efficiently as I could. And if I did get a call that someone has been trying to reach the superintendent or a principal, I would definitely try to hold them accountable for that as well.
Thank you. We're moving to our closing remarks, and so we'll go into that. I'm sure everybody's ready to go home. In closing, candidates, it's a tough job. It's not an easy job. And, and like the rest of you, I applaud Ms. Crawford's efforts for getting out there as the incumbent and working with us. She's always been at our Broadmore Neighborhood Association meetings. And I would expect that the, if you're elected, that you too will come too and be a part of us.
Before you go forward, full disclosure for the benefit of the two ladies on your left and the audience who may not know, but Mr. Broussard at one point ran for Caddo School Board District 8 against Ms. Crawford and...
That was eight years ago.
Forty-three percent?
Right, it was a close race, to say the least, with limited funds. So I felt, I felt too dearly. There was no Citizens for a Better Caddo. But anyway, that being said, do you really want to be a school board member? And do you believe in term limits? Do you really want this job? It's a thankless job. Didn't really want it.
I wouldn't be running if I didn't really want the job and think I could get in it and really make a difference. So yes, I want it. I know it's a thankless job, but I feel like I'm a person of service. I have worked with different organizations and provide time and, you know, my service. And I tell them all that when I work, I don't have any money, but I do have time and I can, you know, lend that time to you. So, and I forgot the last part of that question.
Do you want it?
Did I? Yes, I, like I said, I wouldn't be running for the position if I didn't...
Yeah, term limits.
Oh, yes, I do believe in term limits. And somebody said in one of the forums last week, that serving on the ward should not be a career. So yes, I'm in favor of term limits.
How many terms?
No more than two.
I would agree with that. I think no more than two, because it does take a while for, for you to learn and to become a good member. And yes, I think too. I definitely do want this job. Part of my family is over here, they're going to laugh, but I make very informed decisions. I make decisions lightly. And I did a lot of research. I truly feel like the Lord has brought me to this level. I mean, to at this point of my life has brought me to where I am. The last six or eight months have been a transition time for me, preparing for my first grandchild. My mother has had some health issues and I've had to be very, very hands-on. And we're now in agreement and she's very happy in some long-term care. I've had to restructure some things with my business and it's freed up some time. And through a lot of these troubles and some other things, I spent a lot of time in prayer as to, okay, there's, there's something there. And so again, as knowing I was rotating off of Providence House, I really was looking for a way to give back. And of course, the perfect way was the children of Caddo Parish.
Thank you. Ms. Crawford, you want to keep the job?
I am all about for the people and by the people, but the people said you have term limits. And so this year, I think whoever wins this election will have three terms. To me, the best term limit person is your finger when you vote for someone else. But the people said, yeah, you have to have term limits. I do want this job again. I was kind of wishy-washy a little bit until we got the superintendent. And I saw what he was going to do and how he was going to work in the schools. He's made progress already. He hadn't even been here a year. And I said, "I want to work with this man for more years and make a difference in how, you know, I've made a difference, but I want to make more of one in, in Caddo before I leave." And so I hope that you consider voting for me and I appreciate it if you do.
Before we get to our closing remarks, which are what, a minute, two minutes? I have, I have a personal question and you have to answer immediately with one word. Burr or Shreve this week?
I do that with cowboys and saints.
Come on, Burr or Shreve?
The Saints?
Saints.
No. Broadmore Neighborhood Association does not allow you to escape the question. Burr or Shreve, you want to answer?
My kids went to Burr. I mean, I don't know.
Which one?
I live in Burr's district.
Which one? Come on.
Oh, I can't pick. I vote for both people. You can't choose. I don't go to high school very often. Listen, I, I decided I was going to talk. I guess they call it smack to the superintendent about Dallas and the Saints. And so when I go to the board meeting next week, I have to bring papers back.
Okay, let's see if you answered the question. The last candidate did not answer. Burr or Shreve?
I was just wondering, what are you talking about?
That's walking the line.
I heard her say footbod, so I guess that is what you're asking me. So I don't live too far from Shreve, so yes.
You're Shreve, okay, got an answer. Okay, Ms. Locke.
It's really hard for me. I have a Burr graduate, but she's not in the room, so I guess I can say Shreve.
Shreve, oh, two Shreves, oh. Oh, and Ms. Crawford, one more chance, Burr or Shreve?
I'm not going to choose.
Okay, well, I have, I have a kid.
When I have a hard decision.
The moderator's kid. Okay, closing remarks.
I needed to do this was coming because I talked to it the other day. This takes about 40 seconds for me. I just want all of you to think seriously about whoever you choose. And don't know if we're going to have a runoff election. If one of them gets 50% plus one, we won't. But there is, there is a scheduled election, December 6th, Saturday. And if we don't choose among these three, I pick November 18th on a Tuesday in this room between the two. And my only question is, if you, this, this is unfair, like Burr or Shreve, and you knew it was coming. If you don't win, if you're third, which of those two would you endorse?
This is the most...
Okay, here we go.
Would you pick either one? You don't have to give a reason.
She started slash, let's flip, Ms. Locke. If you, if you're not in a runoff, which one of these candidates...
Who would you vote? That's not just a fair question. It is unfair. It is unfair.
Let's vote.
It's more humorous. It's not even humorous.
This is the first time on Memphis Crawford I've sat with Ms. Shepherd.
Triple dice, that's fine.
That was his question.
I thought you were going to bring up tornado-proof buildings. I have my law.
Too late.
I was serious, I was here with this, I was serious. She and I have worked, we're trying to get tornado-proof buildings, very briefly.
Me?
I'm hoping to get support. But just think about it, in Moore, Oklahoma, a tornado hit Park Plaza and killed students. And the same tornado hit Pineview and nobody died at that school. And it was 20 minutes apart. The only difference is the second school had tornado-proof buildings, so we, we have to think proactively.
And that's come up every school board election for...
Well, I've been bringing up 35 years.
Thirty-five years?
Seven superintendents with no law.
Okay, I'm going to let the child managers have the first say and final closing remarks. Ms. Locke, would you like to start us?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you all again for coming. Thank you for the questions. I thought they were all very relative. Then I come to you as a concerned citizen for our parish. We do have some very high-performing schools that we need to be proud of in our district. But with any district, there is problems. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity to look into those and see how we could improve our district. As a whole, as, as Caddo Parish schools, my understanding is we have a very large unfunded retiree pension fund that really needs some attention. So then in a few years, when I'm broke, so my, I'm, I'm very aware of that. And again, it's very important to me to lead in a positive way. And I appreciate all the positive comments tonight as well. But I just really would like to be a part of this group. One of the things that we've worked on quite a bit at Providence House, again, in my six years, is learning the difference between governance versus management. There is an art to being a good, effective board member. And with the strong leaders that we do have in place, Dr. Gorey and of course Keith Garten, again, was part of this very informed decision that I made to run because they are very strong leaders. But I think they need a very strong board to help stand up to some things and make some hard decisions. But again, I think being a good board member is important, listening to everyone in the district and making informed decisions and be good stewards of the funds that all of you in this room and all the taxpayers have entrusted into us. So I would appreciate your vote.
Thank you, Ms. Locke. Ms. Shepherd?
I do want to thank the Broadmore Home Honors Association for allowing us to be here tonight. I have some friends there, the Lord's supporting me out there. I want to thank them for coming tonight and thank all of you for coming to listen to us. And I myself, I want to be held accountable, so make sure you do that. I have some information in the back, so I won't take, probably won't take all my two minutes, but I have a brief bio there that talks a little bit about me and what I've been involved in. But I do want you to know that I believe in working as a team. And I will always, always advocate for children and school employees. So I intend to be a very good, competent and confident school board member so that we can address all the educational needs of our children from the cradle to their careers. And we really didn't get into all of that tonight. But I think that's important because our future and theirs deserve no less. And if you believe, as I believe, that every child matters and deserves a great public school, please vote Ms. Shepherd, number 75, on Tuesday, November 4th.
Thank you. Ms. Crawford?
A lot of you know me because I do come to the Broadmore Neighborhood Association meetings. But if you don't, just let me tell you that I have worked very hard in the past 10 years. If something was implemented and it didn't work, we went back to the drawing board and tried something else. You have to keep working. And, and District 8, we have some very good schools. In fact, they're the backbone of the parish, but they're also the backbone of the state. They're on some of the highest list in the state. AC Steer, Riverside. Shreve Island is coming up, right behind them, you know, knocking on their doors. So, you know, AC Steer's consistently in the top 10 neighborhood schools in the state. So, but you can't give up on those either. You have to make them smarter. And they, the last time we got scores, AC Steer was an A. It doesn't mean they can't improve because look at the middle, the magnet schools. They're an A schools too, but their scores are higher. So, so we have lots of work to do at Broadmore and Yuri Drive, as well as those schools that are performing. that are performing. So I will always go to the drawing board, and I think we finally found something that works, and if it doesn't, we'll find something else. There's all kinds of things in the Southern Regional Education Board that makes K.A. education suggestions of things that work. And you can just go there and look someday if you just want to look. 你继续尝试直到你把它正确了。我努力工作，总是会，总是会。谢谢。
And in a closing remark, I'd like to thank all three candidates. Thank you, Ms. Locke, Ms. Shepherd, and Ms. Crawford for coming and participating. I would also ask that, win, lose, or draw, all three candidates be a part of this organization because I think all of us out here know that, especially those over 25, know that where your schools go, so do your neighborhoods. And your neighborhoods, your schools define your neighborhoods. So this is a really important vote. I hope all of you talk to your, to your neighbors and everybody that you know in town, and ask them to get involved with this school board election, and actually in all of them all over town, because our neighborhoods are at stake. And for some of us, we've also worked very hard to maintain our neighborhood, especially those of us who live in older Broadmore. And I want to see it continue to be the focal point of this town. The Broadmore Neighborhood Association has an excellent reputation of being leaders in town for informing their citizens under Ken Craft's leadership. And so I'd like to tell you, thank you all of you for coming, and especially the candidates. Thank you for your...
I need 30 seconds for Housekeeping. Next week is in the gym, but the amendments at 6:30 in the City Marshal, Mr. Don Otis is one of the City Marshal candidates, double with Cameron. Similar format, Dr. Sato from LSU has explained the amendments, probably a couple minutes each, there's a bunch of them, and then the five candidates are invited, and then, and then three weeks, and then another one in December. And the final thing is this. I can remember so vividly in the early 90s delivering pizza at 1:00 and 1:30 in the morning to the line of people camped out at Broadmore Middle Lab, camping out all night because it ate in, who was first come, first served to get in. This is probably 23 years ago, I'm thinking. And that's how, that's how good it was then. They could only take so many, I think 60 slots, and they had over 200 kids with parents. And it was awesome. I don't know that we'll ever get back there, but these people are here to help us try, okay? Thanks again. Be careful going home.
But we need y'all to go and tell people we want it back. I say that all the time.
I say it all the time.
We want our bulldogs number one, not just the ones at Starkville.
Thank you all.